We'll go ahead and get started. I'm going to call for the order, the Village Council Regular Meeting Tuesday, February 13th at 7:01 PM. If you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an interior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And of course, would you call the roll, please? Laurie Bojo here. Kelsey Cook here. Lori Helma.
Yes.
Allison Kemp here. Jacob Nicosia.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Do not change the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Bojo, seconded by Helma. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. Next up is public comment. If anyone would like to speak during public comments and address council, please feel free to step up to the podium. You can state your name, you may state your address, anything you'd like to address council. Anyone like to speak?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, maybe I don't quite understand this information that was sent about changing the boundaries and all that kind of stuff. And I just, before they start thinking about taking our property and all that kind of stuff for downtown area, where is all the businesses and everything? There are all empty lots that are all down on Washington. My girlfriend, her parents' house was torn down 20 years ago and it sits right there on Washington. Nobody uses it. I was, lived on Berdick and been on Mill Street since 1946, and I see nothing but devastation, but parking, parking areas, parking areas, parking areas. Church next to me, nobody ever uses that parking area. Now we got Wackel built his building, now there's an, and you're going in over Stan Street. Parking lot, parking lot. Where are all those people living that used to walk downtown, used to use businesses? We used to walk to the drugstore. We used to go clothing stores, used to go to restaurants and everything. We walked, and now it's like we're discouraging people from living downtown. All there is where I live, I can look out, 17 houses are gone. Where are all those, those people living? They're not living in town anymore. They're all gone. There was 27 kids on my street alone when I was growing up. Went to schools, went to the show, went everywhere. Where are they all at? You're discouraging them or anybody from living downtown. The worst is the traffic. I can't even get out half of the time onto Berdick Street to go to work. These kids race down Mill Street, go down to East Street to go to Glassby. They don't want to use that. Go down and have to wait for light. They're all racing down to get down there. Everybody's racing around to get out of town. And I just would hope somebody, there's a lot of wise people sitting around here, to be looking at both sides of the issue, because once you make a mistake, it's gone. Nobody can, can put where those parking lots and put homes back there and encourage people to live downtown. And that's what you should be doing, looking at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. Anyone else like to address council under public comment? Yes, Mr. Wackel?
Dave, did you watch the game at Mark's House the other day?
Where?
Mark's House.
Um, yeah, it was.
I've got to watch some of it.
Yeah.
She was fine.
Super Bowl?
Yeah.
Good evening, Dave Wackel. Longtime resident. Not quite as long, but pretty close. Anyway, I'm here to comment on the TIF project, her resolution that's going forward. Is this another 20-year renewal? Do we know that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I didn't see it in the advertisement. I sat on the DDA board for a long time, and it was a great, great experience. If you want to learn something about the community, get on the board. And I think it qualifies for a community service, too. So if you ever need a community service, you can use that as a backup. Anyway, one of the, some of the things that I learned on the DDA board was Oxford was weak as far as a walkable community. Now, this is back in 2000, 1998, and it was very difficult to get around town. And I will, I'll be brief as I can. But it's changed tremendously on this last project that was done with the MDOT, it was new sidewalks and all the other improvements that came along. That's helped a lot, and we have better circulation. People still drive from parking lot to parking lot because they don't feel safe crossing 24. That'll probably never change because we missed our chance to rob some of the traffic around town. Lake Orion has a great situation, so they don't have any parking. We have some parking, but we have traffic to deal with. So I think that it's very important for the DDA to continue to capture the tax money and use it locally, rather than let it go to the state and then come back to the county. Instead of getting 100% of what was captured, we might get 10% of it, so we can spend more money in our own community, our own tax dollars. It's not a tax increase, it's what we're already paying. It's very, very important to understand that. It's not throughout Oxford, well, I guess kind of it is, but not directly. So no one's paying more taxes because of this. It just gives our, our community money to budget for infrastructure, facade grants, organizational meetings, events. So there's a lot that, good things that come out of it, and I would like to see it continue again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Would anyone else like to speak on our public comment? We are hearing, we are having a public hearing on the TIF Development Plan Renewal as well, almost next up on the agenda, but. Okay, now seeing anyone else, we will move on then to the item six on the agenda, public hearing. The first one that we have this evening is an amendment to our purchasing, contracting, and selling property. Mr. Davis, can you just give like a two sentences over here?
Yeah, it's what we did the first reading on. Basically, the only items that are being updated are the local preferences that we talked about, 3% for the greater Oxford area, and in fact, the ability for the capital of 3,000 and 5,000 give the ability for the Hy-Vee to come down and match. And it's, I think it's highlighted in red in our new packet. It's on the, the new business, where the, where the, yeah, 9A is where the actual, nope.
9A.
9A, I'm sorry. Where the actual ordinance is.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the purchasing policy for the village? So please.
Should be open.
I guess that's a good idea.
How may I most open the public hearing at 7:10?
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is open, so anyone who'd like to speak under this public hearing, please step forward.
Is this for both?
It's just for the purchasing policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing none.
How may I most open the public hearing at 7:10?
Thank you.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so I closed the first public hearing. The second public hearing is our Downtown Development Authority, TIF and Development Plan Renewal.
How may I make a motion to open the public hearing at 7:11 PM?
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Yes.
Do you think it'd be a good time, an appropriate time to maybe have Mari or somebody just give an overarching idea of what the TIF plan is, that may answer some of the questions that's going to be speaking here?
Absolutely, yeah. If you don't mind, thank you so much.
Do you want to?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Mari Ortega. I'm the Village Planning Consultant, and I worked with the DDA to develop the draft TIF redevelopment plan for 2024. Key points to this is the fact that the plan needed to be updated to continue its capture of the increment and to continue the projects the DDA in their face. This has to be done every, at the end of every lifecycle of the plan. The previous plan was done 20 years ago, so this proposal is to extend the DDA for another 20 years. Some key aspects of the plan is that the boundaries, the DDA will not increase at all. The boundaries are staying exactly the same. Another key aspect is that the millage rates in the different captures are not being increased. Everything is staying as has been in past practice, based on the previous plan. So the plan itself is two dots, is two issues. It completely follows the state requirements under the state statute for a tax increment financing plan. Number one being that it's a, first part goes over the development plan, meaning that the DDA has listed some various broad-based projects that would help to assist the businesses in the DDA to create, to sustain their business and to draw new businesses into the community and new residents into the downtown. The purpose of the plan is to create a vibrant pedestrian atmosphere. The second part is the tax increment financing portion. That's the instance where we go through the millage rates of the various districts in which the increment, meaning as property values increase, rather the taxes on that increment, not on the entire property, there's base value of the properties that go to the other districts. But the increment as property increases in value over time is allocated to the DDA district for their projects. And so that's basically the scope and scale of the plan. It's not, once again, it's not intended, it will not increase the project area, the boundaries stay exactly the same, and the tax rates are not going to be changed at all by the TIF. But the TIF, a key point, I believe, that's always important on the TIF, is that the TIF does not increase the tax rate. It is not an additional tax. It is a capture of the tax for the DDA project. So that way, the DDA can take into various activities, the various events that have been happening, and the various infrastructure projects, such as the various items that can use to help sustain the businesses. And in the end, the point is to have the DDA be a viable, competitive, commercial area for the other developments that are seen in other communities.
Perfect. Thank you for your call. And if there's anyone in the public, supervisor, crews, who'd like to step up to the podium?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jack Curtis. I live at 195 Grand田 Drive, Oxford, Michigan, 4837. First off, I'll call out Kelly. She just knows I'm going to do this tour. And Kimberly, you know, two of the strongest drivers behind what you have created in downtown today. Absolutely fantastic. My grandkids are out here, I'm out there, you know, whether it's witch's night, whether it's soup stroll, whether it's, whatever we do, it happens very nicely, thanks to the whole DDA, all the volunteers and chairs, but under the leadership of those two. I know they yell at me a lot, but that's okay, they're team. I just want to tell you tonight, we had a change in some of the managers since the first TIF was brought up, and first thing those managers do is they're very responsible for their siloed budget. They look at all the taxes coming in, and they say, okay, I have this much money. Then all of a sudden, they see a TIF. Well, what that means is in the downtown district, they're going to capture the taxes of those millage supply taxes to the township for its use for ambulance service, fire service, animal parks, and the operation of the township. Operation of the township, hey, you're going to get $40,000 from us. I mean, it's nothing compared to the job that this DDA has done. I know some of them are here, Pete's here, Rod's here, but, you know, you guys did a great job down here. It looks fantastic. So I tried, I talked to our Parks and Rec Director and explained to him how a vibrant downtown brings people here to Oxford. Oh, guess what? They came here from a park, your park, so they come to downtown. They love coming to downtown. I talked with chief, you know, he's facing budgetary constraints with the cost of a fire truck, has now gone to $700,000. An ambulance, what is it, $380,000, something like that. You know, 10 years ago, they were half of that. So there is a lot of concern with those silos of money that we're capturing, but after we explained how the growth in this downtown has performed, how the activities in this town have excelled beyond belief, our downtown has not really looked better, except for one spot, Dave. We are really, I've been here only 51 years, so it's really a pleasure to come here, eat here, shop here, and I love the support that these ladies and the DDA does, and I just want to support you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments and support. Anyone else like to speak under this public hearing? All right, seeing none then.
How may I make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:17?
Score. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Hearing's closed. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent agenda, item seven, eight. For this one, I just wanted to point out that we do have a resignation from, thank you, Kathy.
Karen, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm trying to get that page.
Joe was giving me roommates and I'm looking right in.
Karen.
So we do thank her for her many years of service on the beautification commission, so. And then the Oakland County Treasurer's Office asked me to read into the record a notice about foreclosure prevention. So can I do that now, or?
Yeah, you're not going to read it from consent.
No.
You just want to read it into the record.
Yeah, just to note this under correspondence.
It's good information.
And then we'll take a, then we'll approve, receive and file. So this is from Oakland County Treasurer's Office, foreclosure prevention. So the Treasurer's Office is in its final stretch of the foreclosure prevention efforts. The tax foreclosure deadlines for the 2021 or prior year taxes is on April 1st of 2024. That means if these taxes aren't paid off by April 1st, or any interested party hasn't entered into repayment schedule with the Treasurer's Office by then, the property will be foreclosed. Since December of 2023, the Treasurer's Office has conducted over 1,000 taxpayer systems meetings to assist taxpayers with keeping their properties by working with them to get on a repayment schedule or identifying resources that may be beneficial to them in this situation. They are here to help anyone and strongly encourage taxpayers to contact them before the tax closure, foreclosure deadline if they are any delinquent taxes for 2021 or prior tax years. We can schedule these assistance meetings by calling 248-858-0611 or visiting oakgov.com/treasure. Some of the resources available are a financial empowerment center right within the Treasurer's Office that provides one-on-one financial coaching, and then Lake Shore Legal Aid as well provides free legal services for ineligible folks and seniors. And again, the Oakland County Treasurer just wants to strongly encourage taxpayers to contact his office if you have any delinquent taxes and get any help that you may need. So is there a motion to receive and file?
How may I make a motion to receive and file, consent agenda, item seven, A, one and two?
Support.
Thank you. Motion made by Helma, seconded by Nicosia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. Move on to seven B.
How may I make a motion to approve, consent agenda, item seven B, including the bills amount of $186,499.69?
Support. Motion made by Helma, seconded by Ken. Roll call, please.
Bojo?
Yes.
Helma?
Yes.
Nicosia?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries, that is approved. Thank you. Item eight, unfinished old business. Item A is our DVA project update at 32 East Berdick. Mr. Wackel, did you want to give an update, or Mr.?
Not a whole lot. If you want, Dave, I was just going to highlight a couple things. We met, it was an online meeting, Tom Brandy and myself, and Dave, about the lighting and stuff over there, and they're, they asked by either how they're going to get the power sources to the lighting in the parking lot area over there. And we're going to try and incorporate that into our community lighting program, so it's just part of our street lighting programs, will avoid having to install a meter space and socket and things. And they have a plan to meet Mr. Wackel sometime, to go out there with their engineer folks to look at the infrastructure in place and then make sure that it's at the, anything else? That's our work there for later.
Dave Wackel, I'm going to make sure this is on the record. The meeting was scheduled with DTE, and as a matter of fact, I called Mr. Curtis that morning when the planner was two and a half hours late, and he said that, well, Linda Lee's already left to meet you. I says, I've been here, she'll let us know. The subcontractors are here, my electrician is here, and nobody from DTE. And I've had no comment from either one of Linda or Mr. Darren, I think his name was, Sensen, that was, I believe, January 9th. So that's the stats, and the poles would have already been installed. We've done it ourselves, but they said, no, we're going to install them. Okay, well, now they're in our building and they need to be moved. So I don't know if they go to the DPW or they go to DDE.
Do you think they're going to sit outside forever? Do you think there's a space over there we can put them down?
There's definitely a space over there, but I don't want, we have a lot of scrappers in Oxford, so keep our streets clean.
Mm-hmm.
And anyway, I don't want them to disappear.
Okay.
They are nickel-dyed items. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council on item doing that? No, you're none, okay. We will move on to eight B, the Northeast Parking Lot Committee Updates.
Yeah, and you may have already read the minutes from the meeting that we met. We had a pretty productive meeting, I think, last before there. Talked about various things, options, and I think the woman that talked up, you must be a Mill Street resident, how we talked about potential down the road if there was a, the rear wheels block, if they wished to sell them, how they might line up next to our spots. But again, none of us thought that was a viable solution at this time. That was just when people are looking at a map, they're like, well, where, where in the area would there be additional elbow room? We would prefer to go north. There's a couple spots on East Street, I think, that down the road could possibly be better spots for additional parking.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm happy to see that the committee met already and looked like it was very well organized and.
I brought all this.
That helps. Any questions or comments from council at this point?
We don't want your house, Jared. We need you right here.
You're going to have to carry me out.
We need you right here. Oh, Pete's getting ready.
And the second part of that is the man way, I'm going to give this further down and take it up at that end.
Jeff? Okay. Do we have an idea or any more information on when the new venue may open to where this parking crisis potentially could?
I think April, though we had. March?
Okay.
But again, huge events being booked are probably, we're not looking to fall by the time somebody comes in and actually books an event, so.
We have a lot more time.
Yeah.
The total, the total possible number was.
High.
Higher than I thought.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll be achieved, but.
Worry about the potential.
It's pretty small.
Yeah.
That was part of our conversation that day as well. The viability of that large number being in there, I don't think it's really there.
And that owner was very forthcoming, I thought. And he was.
Anything from council on this agenda item before we move on? You're none? Okay, we'll go to eight C, the Village Office Parking Lot Project, unscut line update.
So I gave you a small size in your packets, because I gave you the larger sized plans, just so you review them today. And it's been ready, it's ready to go up, but it actually hit the share bid doc locations today. I posted also on our first bid net mitten location today as well. I've already had a few people inquire on that, and so just through the long, 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 long process, lots of back and forths with engineering, you know, we have the old water main coming that was feeding the fire station along here that has no shutout valve on it, so if something was to happen in that line, we'd shut down all West Berdick Street from the nearest valve to valve. So part of the plan is to have to put a valve in the front, near our driveway in West Berdick. We have to dig a large enough swing in to build it for our fire suppression, building at that point will downsize it and just feed a small line out of the rear building. There's really all the need out there, the bathroom, the sinks, so we'll get rid of the one we need for some of that larger pipe that'll be abandoned. A lot of drainage improvements, change in the dumpster location to allow for more parking over here, put in a location in the south lawn, so to speak, off the edge of the building. Still be a good spot for the trucks to get into and access it. A little more green space, or shorten and pull in our asphalt areas along, a little more green space along the sides. So just want to make sure you guys had the latest plan, that was just the last few tweaks on it we did last week.
It's exciting that this could be potentially done before Memorial Day, getting into the, you know, kind of summer in downtown Oxford and having the extra parking and things like that.
A big part of that is we want to make sure we're not in Curtis Wright's way at all.
For elections, yes.
Summer for the elections, he's going to use it in August, he's going to use it in November. We don't want to try to go between that window.
Yes.
We have a pretty large window between February 1 and that. And it's that season, right, we're right now, we're out there hungry, looking for projects. We hope we want the first one to get new bids. And the plan is it's due the 29th at 10:00 AM, I think it is, and we hope to have something here for your March consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from council? All right, we will move on then to new business, 9A, the Purchase Ordinance Number 421, second reading.
Yep, and like I said, the last page, or as right above your signature, Kelsey, here is the changes that we did and incorporated in the first reading, basically just addressing the local preference for purchasing.
Yes, as a will, if you give it. Okay. I will move to approve the second reading of the Purchase Ordinance 421 as presented.
Support.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Nicosia. Any discussion? Here is none. Roll call, please.
Nicosia?
Yes.
Helma?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Bojo?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. That's true, thank you. Next is the 9B, first reading of Ordinance 422 to adopt the DDA TIF Plan Renewal. So we could hear about that, we'll start taking a drink, a couple hearings. We can second Director Westbrook, is there anything you would like to add under this that wasn't covered?
Always told me to.
I just want to do a shout out to Chris Davis, I've leaned him a lot on this process. Mari did a great job putting things together and them two working together, I think.
I, you know, cut down a little bit of tree to get you this memo, I know you're enjoying The ordinance was Exhibit 2. I think the nicest thing we've tried to do for you guys was Exhibit 3, where we gave you a checklist to look at as you review the plan.
We kept having to only get checklist part of our bill.
Did you?
We just wanted to make sure, we were checking it out, right, control.
I'm going to give the, I'm going to give, I'm going to give you the, anyways, let's just, we can just say this, the plan that you are considering meets all of the statutory requirements under the law, and all of the findings that you are required to make to approve the TIF and DDA Development Plan, in my opinion, are in the plan and presented sequentially almost with the statute itself, which I commend you on the format. I think it was just an easy read to have the. I think it was just an easy read to have the statute here and your plan here and it flowed just perfectly. So the requirements are met from a legal standpoint.
Absolutely, thank you. Yeah, I know this was a significant amount of work and it seemed to turn out very well done, so thank you to everyone. I will move to adapt, move to approve the first reading of Ordinance Four Twenty-Two as presented.
Support.
Motion by Coach, seconded by Helmut, any discussion, questions, comments from council? We will have a roll call vote, please.
Bojo? Helmut?
Yes.
Nicosia?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. X-nine, C, Resolution Twenty-four Zero-One, not expert as a new assistance local governing body resolution for charitable gaming license. So this is for their new tournament and of course, a charitable gaming license is a proper avenue to go for that, so.
Yeah, it's the Michigan Lottery provided them, I think, with the border plate, the resolution and provided that's there so she could incorporate it into the question.
Yep, I do see that, that looks great. Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to pass local governing body resolution as presented allowing for the OAYA to apply to the Michigan Lottery for charitable gaming license.
Support.
Thank you. Motion by Nicosia, seconded by Helmut, any discussion on this motion? You're none, roll call vote please.
Kemp?
Yes.
Bojo?
Yes.
Nicosia?
Yes.
Helmut?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries, resolution is adopted. Nine D, they propose contract extension for nine-one-one dispatch services with Open County Sheriff's Office.
So...
Exactly, first off, you'll notice that the dollar amounts are broken into a monthly. First, they give you that amount of the full-time equivalent officer and things like that, but as further in, it breaks it down into monthly fees. And it was, it's, the first year was a bit of a jump, it was around thirty percent, I think it was, and then it went more to sixty percent, so that's years two and three. I wanted to get that information, it still is, I think, a good deal for us. David went and reviewed the contract to be sure whether there's anything else that we need to worry about.
So I remember when we first switched those services and we did the first contracts. I don't know if you noticed, but negotiating with the county is tough.
Is it?
Hard to negotiate a typo sometimes.
Yeah.
But no, the contract has remained basically in the same wording, and I think you know the county likes to have a code. A similar contract for all of its dispatch services. So we looked for the glaring issues that were known, and the contract is the same as basically the last time I looked at the house.
Right, perfect. Thank you very much. Is there a motion for item D? For proposed resolution, we mentioned this. Yeah, the contract extension, not a resolution, that's okay.
Historically, I don't think this motion. I would make a motion to adopt the proposed contract extension for nine-one-one dispatch services with Open County Sheriff's Office.
Support. You're right, Bojo, seconded by Ken. Any discussion on this item? You're none, roll call vote please.
Helmut?
Boy, you just gotta shoot them, don't you?
Yes.
Nicosia?
Yes.
Bojo?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Nine E is a northeast parking lot consideration of signage, purchase and installation.
So, some of the goals we talked about at our meeting was to business downtown businesses and stuff, because the government parking lot was short-term potential solutions and long-term, right? So, short-term, there was an agreement or consensus at least that perhaps of the first row of parking from north to south, where at least the public spot ends, that we could put the stand, the signage down there for children. Obviously, it wouldn't change for the handicap spots, they have their own. And if the owners of the lot to the north, Mr. Parker wanted to do the same, obviously they could do the same, but that would be up to them, that's private. And so we had the DPW at least give us some ideas of the signage cost and things like that. So you see, it's a total of just over four thousand dollars. Of course, doesn't include the DPW labor, they would be that, you have cement truck come and then full fills in those stations, you can see out the parking lot, and then they would install the pipes in the signage. It isn't a solution that's gonna solve every problem, and only certain people believe in science. And some people might think, oh, I'm gonna be in there for an hour and a half, or I'll be out and next thing you know, they walk out and go somewhere else, and then they enter that tunnel. So, we understand it's not a solution that'll fix everything, but I think there was a pretty good consensus that would at least something to go, some way to the openness of the front lots. Preserve it a little bit for those who are coming and going, for those who might go into like the private salon, they might be in there maybe an hour, hour and a half, but they don't need to be there like a, perhaps a party or a wedding, they might be in there four or five hours. Just ample spot behind them or behind the church. We talked about, one of the things we did talk about, the first thing we talked about on our agenda that morning was, where are all of the employees parking? Red Knaps, probably the largest number of employees, and some, most days it has like twenty-five employees, and so we talked about that. Some of his do park over there behind the north side of the church. But, you know, as time goes on, new employees show up, they don't get the memo, or they forget, and some of them end up parking. So, because their concern is that if someone drives through the lot and it's three-quarters full, they're like, yeah, I don't wanna go there and wait, so they go somewhere else. Well, if thirty of those cars in that nice part of the lot are employees, that's a problem. So, part of the discussion was, we've had the parking, we've had it at this church for many, many years, and there's been a sign posted on the lot at Burdick and Mill that it's public parking except for your church service. We, last year, talked about this, there isn't a sign on the north lot, and we did order one that just recently been installed, that I relented there. Just to make sure people are aware that that's public, especially for the Thursday, Friday, the Saturday evenings, when the restaurants and bars are mostly concerned, because that's when everyone seems to grab a table. So, part of my conversation was also to put a cop hat over it. Look at other areas, and that's what our next item on the agenda, we can talk about more of them. But, at least wanted to get this part, to see if you guys were interested in making the expense towards those poles.
So how many? It's gonna be like every other space?
Yes, yes. We don't want them to start up too far. Yeah, like every other space. We have a couple light poles there that are right there, would go onto the poles, so might not, might be a light spanter with these spaces and then a non-light pole. And then, of course, those weekends get signed very middle of the space, they have to be for the car, so it's a little bit, it's about ten of them, so it'd be like every other space. And we want it well signed, we don't want to have problems here. We didn't want any signs, we wanted to do about six spaces.
We talked about additional signage in the church parking lot, one on East Burdick.
Yes, we, well, and I'll talk about it in an hour, it doesn't matter, they can't plan together.
I guess, we're purchasing that signage, I know we can't put this private, is that...
The agreement with the church is both the north lot and the south lot are open to public. The DPW filed them, we did some patching just before late fall, early winter, and the Burdick Street, Burdick Mill lot. The agreement reads that any major repairs are the church's responsibility. So, I reached out to one of the trustees there, who's kind of the main contact that contacts me whenever there's a question over there. I told them what our thoughts were, that we wouldn't feel right pushing twenty-four cars over there, or like twenty-three lots, I believe, over there, spaces of employees, because we would feel like it's kind of taking advantage of the situation. So I reached out and said, what if we construct another thirteen spaces out near the corner more, and that would leave a row all in a church, about a dozen spaces, including the handicap spaces, that we could even sign them exclusively for church use if we need to, and to ensure people don't use them. But we wanted to at least perhaps push more employees over to the Burdick Mill Street. Because if you drive by there many times, there's one car there, maybe. So that's space that employees could, it's a little bit further walk, but not much, and free up more space opening up in this lot. A gentleman called me last week, they were having a meeting, I think already scheduled last Wednesday, I offered to cover the meeting if you wished, and they said, no, they would still take it up. He called me back this week. They don't really have a big problem with that. They're would like us to reconsider the part of the agreement over that, the repairs, more of the repairs are planned. Because if you really take it in totality, I think we and public and the benefits found our benefit more than you might in your lot. So that's something we, as well, we'll bring that up as consideration. Because the north of the lot there on the Burdick Mill does have a couple spots for that. We could pull patch a couple holes, but it really could use a ten-by-twenty top mix asphalt patch. So they're open to that. They just wanna, you know, if we were to leave that burden, they'd be more open to, you know, take it up more of that lot. Again, the north of the lot behind there, I think, a fair amount of employees do use that right now. Still some of them, perhaps even in the school building and others do park a little closer, and it's a concerted effort by all businesses to ensure that employees do park out farther.
I don't counsel, but it seems like it's a lot of signs, number one, I don't know how like physically or aesthetically they look, not like it's not a good idea, but then also worry about enforcement, I mean, those are places gonna be...
Are the signs removable?
So, you've seen around town sometimes, the yellow pylon base, they're filled with their cement or concrete. So, yeah, the DPW can move them with a loader, but no, they'd be sturdy enough, you can't just tip them over and stuff. There's a couple around already, you see behind, perhaps over here, about fifteen minute parking, custom parking, behind the theater, a couple different ones as well.
I don't know if something's recording, but do you think we could like find a teenager to help us show what it would look like? You know, take a picture and then impose the signage?
I am interested in knowing what it would look like, I'm kind of interested in Kelly's opinion. If you mind sharing it.
I think some people can do that, right, they can dump it in.
Oh, yeah.
I can do that for you after the meeting, there's a nap for that.
Is that on MySpace?
You just have your first grandbaby, right? So, yeah, okay, grandpa. So, I would say that, so I was in this meeting, and I think it's critical that we go forward with the signage, even though, yeah, okay, it might not look the best. I think it's far enough out from the businesses and that new public space that we made over, that it's okay. But it was the one thing that the business owners actually were like, okay, we're doing something. And it was the one thing where that was kind of the end of the meeting, where they felt like we had a plan and were willing to, the village is willing to do something. Because there wasn't a great option. But I think that this, yes, it deters some, I don't think that the police need to be critical about it all the time, but on Friday and Saturday nights, when we know that there's a large event going on, which we will know, you know, those nights, I think it would be good, but also for the employees, that's also gonna deter them from parking there. And, you know, being a former employee of Red Knaps with Allison, you know, there were many a times where you're late for your shift and you're parking a little too close. So, I just, I think that all the way around, it's a good option, and it's under five grand, and if it makes our business owners happy and they were all represented there, I think it's, it's a good idea moving forward.
Thank you.
Can we see about getting like empty signs and seeing if a local artist would maybe wanna make signs?
I mean, like two-hour parking, like nice signs?
Yeah, like a really cute, like where you have the same person doing all, so there's like a theme to them or something like that, just something rather than just the everyday yellow and orange or whatever. Just make it like, make it so super cool.
Chief, does that run into enforcement issues if the signage isn't certain lettering or certain size?
Yeah, fortunately. Let the village get some enforcement.
That's what the murals are for, murals where they are. You wanna make sure it's crystal clear and they can see it, contrasting the letters and backgrounds and...
Something maybe like the base or something, you can be kind of like that.
The base is gonna be bright yellow, put more red in it, then.
You are over two, girl. It's gotta be something.
I know it's, you know, quotas potentially under five thousand dollars, but still, like, where does that money come from and why is the village paying for that?
This is, this is a, an estimate. I don't know, we talked about funding, it was more like, are you even open to the idea, and here's the cost, we can discuss, this is step one.
Your obligation is to ensure it's of village purpose.
I don't know if it's village purpose, to be honest.
I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Well, yeah, village-owned lots and the parking enforcement, I think there's...
You can make the link, I think.
We have to ensure that there's handicap spots back there, that they're leaving property and...
We're not forced to.
It's one of those.
Does guys, the villain Burdick Street property, do we just discuss that during budget time and...
Yes.
Do you want to do a contract, if you throw it in the budget?
Again, we have the agreement with them, they might be just meaning a modification of that. You know, I don't, it's been older, of course, we can do the whole thing, but, you know. Because they do have some, a couple spots in that lot that needs addressing this spring.
I think, I think their point is if, you know, we're gonna increase the use, then we should shift the burden of...
Oh, I totally agree. I don't think we could reinvent the wheel of the contract, so...
Definitely nothing more.
Yeah, yeah.
Why are we looking for this one to stay like no more than two hours or something like that?
Two-hour parking, yeah. We talked about, you know, initially when I first brought up to one of the homegrown owners, it wasn't there, one was, one wasn't, not hours in the sun, just ever hold there. Those concerns, two hours enough for them, sometimes people pay their two, three hours if there's an event or, you know, a little get-together going on. But that day, everyone agreed two hours was adequate.
I just personally don't like the idea of putting like a time limit, that's, you know, when you got the whole, don't go through this scanning unless you have five items, and somebody gets angry at the person who's sitting, tries to start playing, they're going to the cops, and so I, I wish there was...
But it's only the first, the rest of it, stay all night.
I prefer if it said something that was a little less, here's your time cutoff, or somebody's sitting there timing it and getting mad because you're running it over, or saying something like, three beers per hour. For restaurant use only, or, you know, customers only, spend a hundred bucks, then you can start your, I don't know.
Again, there's various, various, various types of businesses along there too, right? You have a shop, the pregnancy center, you have a school building, bike shop, physical therapy, those folks are getting out, they're concerned, physical therapy, like, hey, look at them, they're gonna need to replace them. They would have been in the handicap spot, or they might have, the handicap spot might be already full. They're concerned about having some spaces as you're building that front row, because they're gonna be in there for half hour, four, ten minutes an hour. So there was a lot of concern for them, because they're busy throughout the whole day with the pack deployments. And, and they're, so they were like, okay, everyone kind of agreed, everyone could see the benefit of this, to some degree, to their business.
I like the idea in general, I just don't like the idea of the police and fighting, you have, you know, people fighting over it and the police having to get involved, I just like the idea of something that's less...
Mari, do you want to select to the podium? As our planner.
All right, I just wanted to provide some context in terms of the effectiveness of these policies. The intent really, when you have the hours, isn't necessarily about catching people strict in two-hour time, it's about that rotation of, of, of spaces. So you have a certain number of spaces, as long as you get a large majority of those rotating over, even if it is someone coming out and then driving around into another space or to like another quadrant, hopefully it would be to another quadrant, that's effective, because that's what, because what you want is to make sure that when people visit this, the parking lots, that they see there's some opportunity to park. And so, you know, everybody might, they might modify their, their trips a little bit, but they, but they, they actually are very effective, these two-hour limits, with regards to just having that rotation, having cars moving around. People are, people have a positive attitude of the downtown, and they say, well, they know that they have a potential to park there, so that's one benefit of it.
Thank you, that's very helpful. So, it says it doesn't exclude labor, that just means that's our DPW, right? So, as far as expenses go... So as far as expenses go, we can expect around four thousand, so. Are you looking for a motion to approve that expense and do we need to?
Yes, direction one way or the other, you know, that would be good. Um, may, maybe we could, you know, offer to split with the D E A.
I knew it was coming, I just wanted to.
We're providing labor for free.
My board is here.
They can't, is there a forum though?
We're going to do a co, go fund day.
What council thinks, far as, is this something the village should pay for, should we have the D E A borrow some money, should we just give it to them, should we, what do we think?
Our manager could actually spend less than this without council approval.
I don't think we should, I don't think we should be taking anything from the business owners and we've got all those business owners that came out last month telling us that they had to pay for parking in the first place and it's not transferring, they put their money in.
We're not taking anything from that.
No, I, I get it, I'm just saying that they put their money in, we can put the money in for science, that's my personal opinion.
My thing was I want to grant you the concept, right? That if, you know, we had those signs over there, those up or, we had a good meeting here, it was very, we were like, I don't have, um, a good consensus, I think left, this was helpful, each and everyone to some degree.
Yeah.
I, I would have one request, can we like vi- visit the parking fund thing at, when we, when we do budget, because I think it's going to be, next month, someone's going to need to have something repaid again, right? And so we need funds to draw.
And, and.
For sure.
For the record, and I know some people were talking about D D A, except the D E A repaved that northeast lot last year and to the tune of about two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars of D E A funding that paid for that lot.
Excellent.
Yeah, I think.
It's beautiful.
The consensus of that meeting, but this was probably the most tangible thing we could do, uh, if we could make it aesthetically pleasing as official signs as possible, I guess.
Maybe no yellow bases?
You don't get a lot of options. And, and they're yellow for reasons, they're yellow for reasons, like guy wire covers on, on guy wire, they're yellow for a reason.
Just do some black guy flower outlines on it.
You can paint another.
Put a wildcat on it, do something. There's guys.
All right, I'm going to move this along. Let's, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, signs and bases and the amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Give it a little version.
Motion made by Coach, seconded by Ken, roll call, any discussion? No, roll call votes.
Ken? Yes. Rick Garcia?
Yes.
Porcello? Yes. Helmut?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. We have signs. None asked, consideration of the man negotiating for parking lot agreements at forty-four thirty North Washington Street.
So forty-four north is the care right there, the corner of East, forty-eight is these , um, as part of our discussion committee was short term, long term goals, short term was the signage, short term, maybe just as short as possible, the, um, the ability to have an agreement in place to use those parking bases as approximately twenty-two, twenty-three, depending how they're laid out, after hours, after hours, it's the most part of six P M, but during summer time especially, five, six, seven, eight P M, nine P M, are high hours, um, obviously that's in the north side of East Street. I did many, I have some of the homegrown, that's a little bit of a walk, is it, do you still think that would be still good for your tourism, do you think your customers would park here in there?
Sure.
They would love that. Because they already have some dissonance with them, the primary, so if you went over East Street, there's another twenty-four, thirty over there. I spoke to, I worked with, I'm sure we could work something out. So before I even talk in any official capacity, I want to make sure you guys, you know, we haven't kind of had this conversation, what our options are, um, what do I do, and perhaps we'll do a fashion, something similar to the church one, I, I don't.
These would be non-binary, obviously any agreement would be brought back, I agree with that.
Any objection from council on that?
You're good.
We're good.
I'll run to the back.
Thank you. At ten, there's nothing removed from the sun agenda, eleven, this is the second and final opportunity for a public comment, if anyone would like to address counsel or public comment, please feel free to step up to the podium. Mr. Wechel, is that your hand? Yep. No.
Get two minutes every time, right?
Maximize your time.
Okay, we did quite a bit of talking about parking in the northeast quadrant, but I didn't hear any mention of the parking reduction district, which is parking district number four, created in nineteen ninety-six, that was privately financed by five business owners. I know that the committee met, discussed temporary parking, but I assumed that there was going to be a follow-up meeting for the, uh, the real estate issues, and I haven't heard anything, is there, has there been talk of scheduling one, is there a committee set up?
We didn't expand past this, we have a couple ideas, let me find them, we'll leave them to one person.
Okay.
Then we can look for that after the D two.
So, so maybe by April we'll have an opportunity to sit down.
Is that the, I understand your, your issue, but it's a little different than this, so we'll have to look at that as perhaps a different issue to address, I guess.
Well, they're definitely different issues.
Yes.
Um, but the problem's still the same.
I understand.
Did you hear what Jacob asked, right again?
What did he want?
What Jacob asked, we could discuss the parking districts at budget time?
Oh, yeah, I did hear that, yes.
And I think that's.
I thought of it as for parking fund.
Well, I think that's what it all.
Oh, yeah, we need a, we need a parking fund, for sure. I'm sure Mr. Davis though has found lots of evidence regarding, um, the creation of the district and how it was paid for and, you know, other entries into the ordinance, but I've done my own research too, so we should probably get together before we do it, before share too much, I guess, I don't know, I'll have things you may not have, you have things I may not have. I don't, I don't think the committee excluded anything, I think what the committee came away with was what can we do fast to show some progress? Yeah. I think the one thing we haven't stated, that, I, I mean, Brett was very clear, he was going to have a conference with his employees and, and shore up, because he, he said he'd been a little, so many years, I mean, that, that's a big issue, but the thing, other things, there was a strong consensus on these signs, and then I think we have some longer term things that the committee needs. Yes, we do, and I could share something that I thought was very interesting, Superbowl night, I was at my son's house, I left before the game was over, before overtime started, and, or actually before the fourth quarter, and I drove through each of the parking lots and the, the northeast parking lot did not have a single vehicle in it, not one, I was shocked, they were parked in the church, all the church parking lots, so I know Brett did his job, all employees, I'm sure Homegrown's outdoor fire pit was out, so they probably were closed.
Yeah.
And, uh, but anyway, the cars were all at the church, but, because there was none in the parking lot, that doesn't sound good for businesses.
It's nine o'clock on the night.
It was nine o'clock.
Some days, some days historically slow for restaurants.
Yeah, yeah, rest of the parking lots were slow also, that, you know, behind the tap was the busiest, they probably had twenty cars, which is a, a slow night.
For sure.
So.
How many more?
None yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on a public comment?
I do.
Yes, please.
Hi, I'm CJ, I'm one of the eight-point drive. Um, I've been doing, um, I, I work with the economic vitality committee with the D E A, and I've been doing an analysis on the profitability per acre of different parts of the city. One of the things that I'm, I'm finding is that certain areas of our town do a lot of real positive benefit for, for the Village of Oxford, and I think that there are certain zonings and certain things that we've put in place that are ultimately causing us lots of harm, they're forcing us to make tough decisions to, um, raise taxes or not raise taxes, cut services and not cut services. What, what I'd really love is to present to you guys some of these findings at some point in the future, so that you're aware of things that, of decisions that could help us be a stronger, better, more financially solvent community, and it, it probably will take, take more than three minutes, but I, I was wondering if there is time and what, what the process would be to, to, to come and, come and present this information.
Yeah, thanks CJ, thanks first of all for being part of the, you know, the D E A, to grant the committee, so, uh, but I think we can have you added to the next council agenda, and that way you could be right on the agenda and take the time that you need to do.
I think you'll solve the process.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Joe will be in touch and we can coordinate if it at least for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks, CJ.
Anyone else?
You should share whatever he presents for the, for the area.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it's, there's a group of us in the D E A working on this project, it's CJ, he's got one out of it, you know, he may or may not be done by the next meeting, but he can still do this economically. You're the getting pick. We'll filter that information too.
Anyone else like to speak on a public comment? Okay, uh, we will then move on to the committee reports. Noda, Porcello?
Laurie, it was Snowy, Dana, last meeting that she called me and I made her go there, but, meeting was about a twenty-eight minute meeting though, and I, I made up the last ten, fifteen minutes, um, but they did.
It's a long one.
Yeah, they did, uh, order three new buses, that was all approved that night, and they were studying the infinite township pilot program that will start soon, we can try it out in the street, so, that was a little bit that I cleaned from the next one, which we prepared that night. I will be out of town this month eventually for this one.
I gotta make sure of that. Thank you. Uh, planning permission, review permission, how much?
The planning permission, uh, just last week, we adopted our annual review plan, which was in your council back and we approved it, we approved a couple signs for a couple very different businesses, and we kind of came up with a plan, we discussed the landscaping ordinance, gave up the plan on how we're going to pursue that, and now we're going to proceed with, there's some other changes they want to discuss, maybe to discern one of them. And then we gave a commission, I was not able to get to a debt, it was pretty much just a business meeting, and they, I don't believe this can be a meeting this month.
I think it's been canceled over there, I think.
Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, D E A, Kelly, would you mind giving us data on that?
I'm going to have Kimberly do that.
Yeah, perfect.
So I think the, the best thing to come out of the past month was that D E A is accredited for another year, so, um, just a lot of people in this room had support in that, and of course, the council and Joe and his staff, so thank you for that. Um, one of the nicest things to hear is after our first meeting that morning, uh, the business owners were there, some of the committee members, some of our board, was I think that we can just go home now, because it's easy to see how well a community is doing when that many business owners show up and are that positive about their D E A, and, uh, they made it very evident that that doesn't happen often, and it just goes to show how Oxford really is there and also under, so it was an exciting day, it was nice to have them and showcase what we're doing. Um, the trolley will be back up and running for a restaurant week at the end of the month, it had a lot of fixes, so that is good to hear, people have been calling and messaging us saying, when is it coming back, so we're excited to bring that back to the community. I'm going to have Kimberly go through some of the events that are coming up, but some great things is that I don't think our office has ever been so busy with people calling, wanting to either relocate their businesses here or opening a new business, and, I mean, we had both phones going this week, both emails with people looking for space and wanting to be in this community, just because this is where they want to be, and some of them coming just two and a half miles down the road. So, um, a couple to look forward to, Kate Black's, uh, which this will be their second location, is opening up, uh, April first, uh, Choice Therapeutics, they're a hometown Oxford family that will be opening, um, and then probably the one that we're most excited about is a family that closed on the party store yesterday, who's bringing their new brunch spot here, and we're excited to be working with them through the process as well. So we are working on infrastructure projects through ARPA funding and Tony, so that's a fundamental integration, a lot of that is focused around the walkability, crosswalks, we're working on that in design committee, so we're excited to have some spring projects that are kicking off. Do you have events?
Sure.
There's a lot coming.
For sure.
Chief, chief, thank you. Yes, we do have quite a few events coming up, our first one is the, our restaurant week, obviously we talked about that, that's the twenty-third through March seventh, I believe. We also have our Saint Patty's Day pregame, which is going to be a pub crawl that we're going to host the night before Saint Patrick's Day on the sixteenth, partnering with the bars in town to have specials that night as well. Um, we're doing the shopping passport again through the month of March, uh, we will have the letterboxing event through the month, month of April, we will have our spring cleanup in May, April and May, excuse me, um, and then we'll kick off our summer concerts in June, and we'll kick off the market in July, and both of those will run concurrently into mid-August. So we do have a lot of planning that we're doing right now, we're very excited, we're getting a lot of people interested and excited about volunteering, um, so it's going to be good here.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Kelly and Trail?
I'm sorry, the business hours, it killed me.
Yeah, I did it last, last month, um, they're looking at what, an RFQ for some planning and engineering for some thread, prepare the loan trail, they had some grant funding for that, and hopefully that, they didn't quite, they didn't quite get it out for, get all the RFQ approved last month, it was a little, it's a language in the, they had to review it.
And then move on to manager's staff and training reports.
Um, so, D T E, we, we, part of the conversations, we met down there myself as well, we have these LED lights, they went to town years ago, did all the streetlights and some of our parking lot lights, there were some of these old style, these red light were kind of a funny shaped one to see in some of the lot, because those were already switched over to LED, they weren't part of that program at that time, but some of them now are failing, you'll see, instead of having six strips of LEDs, it might be two or three or one in some cases, um, so we, uh, D T is going around and now it's up, uh, retrofitting those with the new LEDs and there's no cost to it. Um, I know, I didn't realize they'd done it one day, but I went over the store one morning, bright morning, and they know it's a minute, three morning to make the bagels, how bright it was out there, so they're already, and work, it's amazing how fast D T, certain parts of D T do work. So hopefully the, the one, they have, we have a, a good map of the ones of the fourth block, it's sort of the old style, and they, well, they'll do it for free, if you want to do it all at once, you're going to pay for it, but we're just doing it now as we assess. Oh, and Mario and I had a couple of planning, pre-planning meetings too, um, one of the properties that was just sold recently, it's ten West Berry, corner of Hudson, it's a rental, two unit rental, um, about, new owner's going to expand, perhaps about a second billion on the south end of that lot, there's, it seemed to be loomed there, it's kind of amazing, you don't, you drive by, you don't think about it, what you see on paper, it actually will fit, so, going to commission, maybe the next month or two. Um, new owners of the vacant lots, just the other side, between Hampton Block and the post office, the old railroad grade and one smaller piece over on Pearl and Broadway there, they bought it, they're not exactly sure what they're going to be able to do with it, the whole still went day and they're already here and they have other developments and restaurants, things like that, but this is one development, a little new form, we'll see what happens.
Great. Thank you. Mark, I think I.
I don't have anything.
Davis?
I do have something about the downtown, um, I have a, uh, my granddaughter, my goddaughter's husband is a, is a border agent and they grew up in Sterling Heights area, and they were in town two weeks ago, and, um, the kids called me, they're ten and twelve, and said, uh, we found a new town in the, in the state, and, uh, it was Oxford, and, um, they had discovered a restaurant, um, but it was spelled wrong because it only said Ox, somehow the sign's broken, and, uh, so when you, when you get there, just go to the thing that says Ox, even though it should say Oxford. I said, I'll, I'll be there, uh, like these, these little kids said, I found this northern town, having grown up in most of their lives in Sterling Heights, and we're fascinated by your downtown, so, it was a nice, it was a nice evening.
That's great, thank you. Thank you. Chief Solow, did you want to speak to anything? I sort of used to have, so, okay. Um, council comments? Um, I want to start because I don't want to end with this, but, um, you know, being elected official in Oxford, I just have to say something about Representative Josh Schreiber. And his comments are so disappointing because we're never going to get anything done. He represents Oxford and when you make comments where people lose any trust they may have had in your ability to think clearly and actually make progress for things like local control, which I know he's a proponent of, he told me that, that I would appreciate having. And then you make conspiracy theorist comments that are highly offensive. What are you going to get done in Lansing now? And I just do not understand where he's coming from. He doesn't seem to realize how ignorant and oblivious he is. And I also want to mention that I was in Lansing in front of the committee that he used to be a part of not too long ago. And Representative Pudzki had to shut him down multiple times because we had people in the audience who are struggling to pay their bills and came all the way to Lansing shaking in their boots to testify to the people that represent them. And he's making comments that were so insulting, I was embarrassed to be in the room that I wasn't from Oxford and so was here, to be honest. And I don't know what his plans are for the future, but if he has any to represent the people of Oxford, I think he needs to turn it around immediately and start focusing on the reason that he was voted into the platform and high position that he's in right now. And he needs to start actually doing work and getting things done and not talking about conspiracy theories that drive me absolutely nuts. So I just felt very compelled to talk about that tonight, and so thank you for hearing me out. It's not something that I want to talk about. And I don't want to end on that note. And please don't feel compelled to comment on what I just mentioned either, but I just had to get off my chest. As I represent Oxford, I feel, uh, very much so that most, probably all people that I know in Oxford are not okay with the things that he's saying, so.
Just want to say.
Second that. So. Councilors, any comments?
No, you said you stated more eloquently than I was, I believe.
Where do we get these awesome things from? These are the, the DDA brochures of the downtown map. That one's mine.
Almost the last year, um, to be honest with you, to have a comprehensive map, there never has been even a database on who exactly is in the district. So we finally got done, printed them, and every six months, they'll be reprinted with all the updates, with all the new businesses coming into town and updated on the website more often than that. So that was just the first five thousand that we distributed through Oakland County.
There's a large, large format one, the DSL one.
Yes, yes, they're ready to go as soon as it warms up a little bit and you get the blocks open. If you have an art office or a trolley and in businesses as well. Yes.
Can we discuss the lights on the light bulb? Little different tone.
Yeah.
Those shouldn't be there. I think we need to have them removed.
Okay, I don't know if you want to take it up as a general item at the moment, but I need to.
But it's council comments, that's my comment. That's not what a light bulb is for, those lights shouldn't be on there.
Do it.
Thank you.
I really, I have nothing interesting her. I feel like I would just be way off base. Probably miss things. But thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move to your, at eight fifteen. We need to report all those opinions and I.